No evidence of signs installation remains and interior renovations, but the alteration to doors or windows located on exterior walls is not an exempt activity, is a clarifier.
That's all.
Do we have windows and doors, or?
Well, yeah, alterations to windows or doors and exterior walls is not exempt. It's a clarification on what interior...
It's a clarification on what interior renovations is.
Is it correct that all of those things are included in the proposed exemptions plus others?
Um, yes.
Sir, can you say that again?
I was just clarifying that all of the existing exemptions are in these proposed ones plus new additional ones.
Well, except for maybe the non, I think what we did, yeah, except for the non substantial.
Right.
You know, we dealt with that whole issue with the administrative approval options.
By being specific, yeah.
And by being really specific in what the exemptions cover.
Great. So, yes, so I was going to try to get to the administrative approval part so we can skip to there. So, there's, just to catch everyone up, there's a section here, a subsection, that states that certain state exempt buildings are still going to be subject to this, like that's the intent.
Three?
That was the bottom of page three.
Yeah, and that's, just as a clarifier for the public, but that's a lot broader than just, oh, you mean statutorily exempt buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
This is under stately.
Yeah, limitations.
Yeah, so the limitations was there, but, I mean, it doesn't seem to be like a widely applicable thing.
Well, it could be actually pretty applicable, but at least it's specifically stated in the regs now, whereas before it was, it was actually regulated, but it was not specifically stated.
So, there's room to debate, yeah.
Well, there have been zoning administrators who don't pay attention to that, and, or who pay over attention to it and just don't put those buildings through design review at all, even though technically they're supposed to go through design review because there might be aspects of the project that come up that can be regulated by zoning.
Hmm.
It's not supposed to be a blanket exemption. That's why we put this in here, so that, you know, future zoning, we can have consistency.
And then the next section on top of page four is about the application process, which we've gone through most of in Maris' intro, except this also has the administrative review process step, right? Do you want to go through that?
Um, yeah, I mean, this has part of it. The section H on page five has more of that.
And I figure we can just do, well, okay, you want to wait, we can wait till we get to H.
Sure.
So, in that case, there's some middle requirements, which are all the things you're supposed to submit with the application, which I don't think we need to necessarily go into, except for, my first question about this is to do with the additional materials. And so, in the case of windows, replacement windows, these are asking for a lot of additional information.
Mm-hmm.
And be interested to know what's going on there.
Um, so, there are some members of the Historic Preservation Commission who really feel like if you're going to replace historic windows, um, there should be a higher sort of burden of proof that you need to replace them. It puts me in kind of a weird position since I also staff the design review committee. I don't see that being something that the design review committee feels a need for. You know, they have certain types of windows that they like to see used because they know they're really energy efficient, they know they work well, they know they look like the older wooden windows, but they just perform a lot better and are easier to use. But Historic Preservation Commission members, at least enough of them to keep this in here, um, really felt like there's a level of value to retaining those old wood windows. And that you shouldn't just replace them if, um, there's, you know, you look at the, people talk about the, that they're replacing them because of efficiency issues, but then some members have looked at it and gone, okay, great, but you still have your, you know, your manufacturing issues, the ultimate carbon cost difference isn't necessarily any, any better. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know where that argument all lays out at this point.
So, what do you guys think?
They're just asking for a written description of why the existing has to be replaced.
Right, and that's-
There's not no specialists who has to be consulted or-
Yep, no, no specialist has to be consulted. They just want photographs of exist, you know, existing conditions. They're not, for the additional materials, they are asking for additional materials from the applicant. Um, I'm not sure that what they've written in here has enough musts to have that change what the decisions at the design review committee level are going to be. And I think part of the reason that they want this additional level for replacement windows is especially in relation to, you know, truly historic buildings, buildings that are on the national register. Um, I think that's one reason that's in there. I mean, unfortunately, it is something that is in relation to replacing windows on anything, not just historic buildings.
It seems like this is like probably the biggest issue in here. Do you think if we can figure out windows, we've like, we're like eighty percent of the way there.
Siding is the other one.
Yeah, siding and windows are the big ones where, you know, people are gonna get worked up about. And I don't know, I don't know how to answer anything, but being like thoughtful or maybe even laying out options of what's, what's possible.
Well, and maybe it's, while we're on the topic, jumping to the design review standards for windows might be one of the things, since we're on this topic anyway. So, that is, let's see, we've got the specific design standards for alterations and additions to building. So, this is section two, two, oh, one, K, one, we're on page eight, very at the, yeah, it's seven, and then, but it's on page eight, way at the bottom, on sub roman numeral eight, windows and doors, where it says, yep, window pattern sizes proportions and original features such as trim, sash, and molding shall be preserved to the extent possible. It's, well, but the thing is, two, there's not, that's pretty, there's a lot of wiggle room in there. You could give it a little more wiggle room and really, you know, the pattern sizes proportions of original features, a lot of times, maybe not the sash, but they keep that trim and the moldings. They pop those out, they take the interior window out and put a new window in and put the, the old, not sash, but molding back on. And a lot of times, they replace those from the inside. We had a discussion about that on the historic building where they replaced twenty-nine windows recently. Um, so they're not, they're not saying you have to keep the windows wood here necessarily. They're not saying the material has to stay the same. Um-
I think, a little bit where the inconsistency that I found came in was the, so what appeared on page five for the additional materials application requirement, that's an application requirement, that's not a standard.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're going to ask you to provide information that we're not going to use because we have no regulations later on that will actually use any of that information that you just provided. We couldn't approve or deny it because there's nothing in here that goes and says windows, you know, and you should not insert, it's just a good rule, you should never insert rules into your process questions.
Hmm.
All your, because we're going to be reviewing this under the review, you don't want to go and say, well, in the application requirement, it says that you need to maintain the windows. That, if, if we keep that, that needs to be inserted into eight, on page eight.
That's what I was thinking when I parted up before. And it already says in that sub two on page five, DRC may require additional information. Like, that's what that section's about.
Yeah.
So, give them that, and if they want the extra on windows, they can use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is, and it may also be, this is a may, so it would be one of those, it goes to the DRC, the DRC is saying, hey, this is a historic building, we need more information, come back next time. You know, it's not, it's not saying, because this is just saying the DRC may require it. I'm not going to require that at the beginning. That's for the DRC to decide if they need it.
But it's also a heads up for the applicant. If they don't want to come back, then maybe they'll provide the additional information.
Yeah, so then, yeah, I guess it becomes, is that, does that, does that actually match up with anything? And Mike has a point that it really doesn't.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think where that first sentence ends, understanding of a proposal period, I think that's fine. I think it's everything, if replacement of windows is being proposed, I think that needs to, if, if that stays there, I would make that a subset, and it says regarding windows, it's this, but then whatever application requirements you're asking for, need to then line up very directly with a requirement later on that says we should review the information that was submitted in number two, to make this decision as to whether or not the window can or can't be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, we have had instances where people say, we're replacing these windows because they're damaged, not because we want, they want a better window. They're just saying, these are damaged and we cannot repair them, we need to replace them. I think that's where this is coming from.
So, then-
But then the question is-
So, do you think you just ask for whatever information they deem appropriate to determine earlier on?
Yeah, because you have that first sentence.
But, under eight, the requirement-
Yeah.
Is, is not that the materials, it is only that the patterns-
Yep.
-sizes, proportions, and features shall be preserved to the extent possible.
Yep.
I mean, it's not even saying that the window itself needs to be preserved, it's the pattern, the look, that's what has to be preserved. And therefore, all this application requirement up front is-
Yeah, they say, do say that door materials-
Door materials.
Need to be preserved on primary facades, but it doesn't say anything about windows. Whereas this additional materials extra is all about windows.
Good. I mean, there's, there are a lot of different parts here, and when you just look at, um, seven, where that's talking about architectural features, not limited to windows, um, if they're distinctive, you know, shall be preserved.
Yeah, the distinctive materials, features, and construction techniques-
Yeah.
That characterize, characterize a property shall be preserved. Yeah.
So, that seems like that's probably an instance, maybe where you've got a building with a certain type of window that the DRC may want more detail, I don't know.
Yeah.
And, yeah, right, and they can ask for it.
Yeah, well, and that's, without having to put all of this information in there.
Yeah, five talks a little bit about materials, historic building materials.
Well, I just, I think, Mike, you're very good point, which is, sub two on page five, the additional materials piece, it's a question really, I mean, I think, as I'm going to get more and more, the subsection does a number of different things. It doesn't do one specific thing, it does a couple. And so, if you want to, and I agree with you, that the, if replacement of windows is being proposed, the applicant must provide, I think that is, is just begging for trouble, especially if you don't line it up with the requirements that go on in sub K. So, I would say just cutting it out altogether, because I think the first sentence grants the committee sufficient discretion to ask for whatever it wants to, for whatever reason it wants to, which I think is appropriate. My only suggestion is if you do want to keep that second kind of clause, I guess I'll call it, is, it should be separated out, made a separate subsection, just to make it clear that it's kind of a separate piece from the broader discretionary grant.
So-
About the second clause in number two?
Uh, additional materials, the if replacement of windows is being proposed.
So, do you have a motion? So, the thought here is that we would just ask the commission send their suggestions as a group back?
I don't think we need like motions or-
You don't think so?
Well.
Maybe not on each individual item.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
I, I think if there were to be a motion at this point, it would be, you know, I guess the commission would move to provide-
Yeah.
A report of some kind, proposed changes or something like that.
I guess that's actually a good, really good question. I missed the last meeting. I'm a little unclear about where we are placing this.
So, yeah, well, last meeting, we didn't have a forum, so we just did a working group. We just, Stephanie and Arianna and I just discussed some, and Mike, discussed just some various things and just kind of planning.
I missed out on paying attention to the meeting before that.
So, yeah, for tonight, the idea is to get through these and have all of our suggestions that we sent back to Historic Preservation.
And, and then for process purposes, Historic Preservation would then basically say, yes, we agree with this, no, we don't agree with this, give it back to you, and then it's your job to get the next tier draft, whether you make final tweaks or not, to move up to city council.
As I say, this is ours to move with, this is our-
Yeah, it's not Historic Preservation Commission's.
Yeah.
But I'm a little bit confused about the, I'm sorry if this was explained before, but the Historic Preservation Commission gives input, but they don't actually make the design review decisions.
Correct.
That's okay.
Correct. But there is, right now, the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission is also the vice chair of the design review committee, and there's other, there's at least one other Historic Preservation person on design review committee. So, there's, there has been, over the last, I don't know how many years, Eric has been on both. Some overlap, but Historic Preservation Commission was also fairly defunct for a number of years. And then the whole rule rewrite, regulations rewrite process sort of woke it all up and got new membership.
And another, while we're talking about that, Erin, another thing that's coming up is probably next week, we'll be talking about the overlay district and its boundaries, which is going to be something that's entirely on us for now, before we make our suggestion to city council. And that's going to be something that we'll probably also need to get, or we will definitely be getting public input on after we've decided what we think would be a good place to start.
Yeah.
So, that, those boundaries are, yeah, again, where this, what this is going to apply to.
Yeah, I remember that, that's good.
So, so our first suggestion is to delete everything after the word proposal-
Yep.
And sub two on page five.
Got it.
Under additional materials.
Is there anywhere else where they are asking, under sub middles, asking to provide photographs, if not necessarily of the existing conditions?
Um, yeah, current color photographs showing the site and affected structures, all sides, neighboring structures, and relevant details. So, that's-
Okay.
G, sub one, sub D.
Right.
And then-
Yeah, so that if, if they're looking to-
Yeah.
Say, yes, these windows match what's there, they need to at least see what's there.
Yeah, and you also have in F, annotated photographs of the existing structure, including architectural details such as trim and molding. There's, there's multiple places where they spell out, we really, we need details.
Right.
So, then, did you want to move on to the administrative review section?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, this is really broken down into two different parts, times when the administrative, the zoning administrator or administrative officer takes care of the primary approval. Um, and there's just a specific list of items, including, you know, individual accessory structures. There's like, right now, if somebody wants to put a shed on a parcel, that, that's in the design review overlay district, that has to go to the design review committee. At this point, HBC suggests, as long as it's just your first accessory structure, just exempt it. If it's in the side or rear yard, there's just no, it's silly to have that go through a design review committee. Additional things like awnings, um, and this is one place where there's kind of an interesting, so in the exemption list that we looked at, you had the whole discussion about exterior placements of meters, vents, et cetera, and fuel propane tanks, right, that were in the rear yard, those are completely exempt. If they're on the side elevation of the building or in the side yard, depending on which item you're talking about, those could now be approved administratively. So, they don't need to go to the design review committee, but they still need some level of approval. And part of that is so that there can be confirmation that there's some screening involved, or, you know, you're not- involved, or, you know, you're not putting a neon green vent on the side of your building that faces your neighbor, so the administrative officer would be able to say, hey, you need to make it the same color as the side of your siding. So there's a whole long list of items, including ADA features, gutters, right now, the addition of gutters is supposed to go through Design Review, and removal of signs, those things are all specifically exempt, you know, just administrative approval required, no DRC meeting. And then the other category of items is if there is a minor change to a previously approved project. So, you know, I had to make my own discretionary call on a Design Review Permit recently, that was, they've gotten approval for a sign, they came back and said, oh, the material isn't going to be metal, it's going to be vinyl. It's not going to change the appearance, it's not going to change the color, it's not going to change, you know, the level of reflective surface, none of these things are changing, it's just the underlying material. Luckily, there's another provision in the regulations, zoning regulations, that gives the zoning administrator the opportunity to amend previously issued permits, but having this further clause that matches back to that, to say, yes, even design review approvals can get amended, I think is helpful. And it, it echoes the language using the material change, but then throws in this other clarifier, that the amendment does not affect any character defining features on the parcel, and character defining features is something that's specifically defined in this section, proposed section of the regulations.
Are signs, is there enough clarity where you would feel comfortable that signs altogether could be administratively approved? Trying to think, if that's like, half the applications, it'd be saving everyone a lot of time.
I don't think that would be a great idea. They have so much knowledge and guidance to give on signs, including...
They see a lot of them.
Well, and, and a lot of, well, but it's also, a lot of these people are landlords or developers, or contractors, so they can look at a sign and be like, mm, you don't want that color combination, there's not enough difference between the two colors you have here to make the sign pop in low light. Or, wait, where are your lights placed? Are you using a glossy paint on your sign, or are you using a matte paint? If you use a glossy paint and these lights, your glare at nighttime means nobody's going to be able to read your sign. I mean, those, those are things that, especially a brain, somebody brand new who doesn't have that background, as a zoning administrator, they're going to have no idea how to give that guidance. Design Review Committee, since I've been here, is very much, in my mind, a resource base, and not just a yes or no base. And, like, when we've had some nonprofit groups come in to get things approved, because of the level of resources and contacts that the committee has, there have been instances where they have been able to point a nonprofit towards a resource to be able to cut their costs on their project, so that then they can do their entire project in the next three years, and not just do half their project. And then they go, okay, let's just give you approval for the whole thing, even though you're coming to us for part of it, and trying to do it in phases, we can get you, we can point you to where to go, so that you can get your whole project done. That kind of, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want signs as a whole to just go to the zoning administrator. I think that means that people are going to miss out on feedback that would really help them. It's not all the time, but it happens enough that I think it's worth it.
Is there...
I mean, I hear what you're saying, I also kind of hear what Don's saying, which is, you could achieve some administrative efficiency here. I'm wondering if there's just like, an ability for an applicant to say opt out, or opt into, you know, just like, an administrative review?
If it's like a...
And bypassing, you know, committee review, because it might just feel... Hey, look, I just want to put a barbed cord on this one.
Well, don't go to barbed cord example, because that has specific licensing. Don't go there.
Or like, a required consultation with them.
But it's not, it's...
But that's already what it is, really.
The, the timing of the permits, I mean, I think we've gotten, the average design review application was issued in eight days.
From time of application.
Time of application to approval was averaged, I mean, it can be as long as 15 days if you missed the deadline, but it's really...
That's pretty efficient.
If, if, if all you need is design review approval, you can submit your application on a Friday, sometimes, depending on how heavy the load is, maybe a Monday, and you're in a hearing the next Monday, and then your application is issued the next Tuesday or Wednesday.
I, I figured it was smaller.
No, no, and they, they need twice a month.
Yeah, our, our goals for, and this was with City Council, our goals for administrative permits are to issue within, our goal is within 24 hours. So if we've got a permit that doesn't need any other reviews, that we could issue them, you know, within 24 hours, it doesn't always work out, because we've had a much heavier workload lately. But DRC, the goal is to issue the permit within 15 days, and a DRB hearing is, should be issued within 45 days. And that's from the time you submit an application, usually it will take longer, we've actually averaged 30 days for DRB, but it, usually when it takes longer, it's not because of anything the administrative staff did, it's because the applicant isn't giving the information that the DRB needs, and the DRB is tabling their hearing, because the application isn't, applicant isn't getting all the information. So those are the targets we shoot for, is to, is to not have, the exceptions are what everybody hears about, the, you know, this has been five months of permitting, but those are the, those are the exceptions. Most of our average permits, and we, we submit, I have to submit annual reports to City Council on the amount of time it takes us to issue permits. And a lot of the zoning changes we made before were to help to adjust some of those times, like, short circuiting, it used to be all DRC applications had to go to the DRB, which added another two weeks, and then DRB hearings have a 30-day appeal period. So it was adding six more weeks to a permit, compared to having it be an administrative permit, which would come back to us, be issued the next day with a 15-day appeal period. So it was really, it made a big difference in the timing on that one. So we do try to keep the, the amount of time down. The issue is usually getting the information from people, that's usually what takes the longest, is, we can approve this really quick, if you get us the information.
Yeah, I mean, statutorily, there's, there is an option, if you really wanted to, to say that, as long as the, you know, the lighting, the shape of a sign, the size of a sign isn't changing, that it doesn't go to DRC, because technically, we're not allowed to review content. But I, I think that, I think that there is value in having that feedback.
That's a sufficiently, that's a correct term.
And signs, signs make a big difference.
Yeah, I mean, signs, what you have for signs in downtown are going to make a big difference, and even if we can't necessarily tell you, you have to change your color, to have that be an option, and, you know, and to get them that, that feedback, is, is helpful.
So for the sake of trying to get this done by 7:30, I'm going to move it along.
Sorry.
So, so the next big section, 22.1.i, is about the Design Review Standards, and my understanding here is, this is not just Historic Preservation, but this is your general Design Review Standards. And I actually do have something of my own on this one, this came up during the presentation from the committees, the second paragraph under Design Review Standards has some outside materials that can be conferred by the city, the various groups looking at this, except it could be read in a limiting way, I think that's, that's what we talked about when it came up. So I would just suggest that before the first colon, that it says, you know, it's the second paragraph down under 22.01.i, page six. To facilitate review of the applications, the administrative officer, Development Review Board, and Design Review Committee may review, and I would suggest adding, any outside materials, comma, including the following, colon.
Including but not limited to?
In my, in my experience in interpreting, interpreting Vermont law, including always means including but not...
Yes.
Yep. I was going to say that you don't need... It's just, I, I agree with you, just sometimes people, people, laypeople sometimes read that and believe that it means just those things.
Right.
You got that?
Yep.
Okay.
If everybody's, so it sounds a bit fine with everyone?
Yep.
And so then we, then we can go on into the standards themselves, and if it helps move things along, I would ask Meredith, what's changed here from what's the current regulation?
Everything.
Okay.
Everything, so...
Even when it comes to these general standards?
So, the, I can't, I can't point out to you which specific things are the same.
Okay.
Because the, the current, the current regulations have eight criteria, that's it. It's a list of eight criteria, unless you are talking specifically about Western Gateway District, Riverfront District, or signs. So we've taken those, you know, the, the HBC has taken those eight criteria, and basically said, okay, great, these are all reflected in part or in some way in the, you know, Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, instead, let's go back to the source, which is one of the things we're supposed to use as a CLG community, and then take those and elaborate on them, or add to them, as we think is required to be able to use them for Montpelier, and use them for both, you know, changes to a current building, and apply them to new, brand-new development. And so that's how they've broken this all up, so that you have your Section J, which is your general design standards that apply to everything. Then you have your specific design standards that apply to specific categories of design, so that, you know, you've got, in here, you have your old categories like signage, which we had before, it's just been adapted a little bit, but then you also have specific standards for alterations and additions to buildings, things that apply specifically to just new buildings or new additions.
I realize I misstated something, these general design standards are historic-specific, actually. I thought that they were broken off, but it apparently not.
Uh, no, no.
My recommendation was to break them into, because one through five are referring to historic, six, seven, and eight, I think we're looking at...
Yeah, J is supposed to sort of apply generally, but it is written so that you have some historic, some new. It, it's a little messy, they were really trying to have these, these general design standards are your overarching, sort of your overarching, not, not goals, sort, sort of your aspirations, if you're talking master plan. Whereas, all of your specific design standards are specifics of how you can achieve these general design standards. You just have to match them up, depending on whether or not, or not you're talking about a historic building, or a current building, or a new building. But it is a little messy, I think part of it was trying to figure out the flow for them, and also trying to figure out how you would do a worksheet. You know, because you might have, you know, number six, new additions, exterior alterations, or new construction, shall not distort historic materials, and the new work shall be differentiated from the old. This is going to apply both to potentially your alterations and additions, no, I guess, it's, no, I guess that one only applies to alterations and additions to buildings. Trying to see here. Yeah, seven applies to both.
Mm-hmm.
Eight kind of applies to both.
Hmm.
You know, if you're talking about, you're putting a new building on a parcel that also has a historic structure, I mean, there, there might be ways to reorganize it, and I think I might, I might suggest...
Yeah, my question I put when I did K was, do we need to have general and specific, could we just tie these two together? Because it seemed like a number of the ones that were in the general could easily just be, you know, like I said, one through five are specifically talking about historic, so why not just remove those from the general and insert them into K1A?
Yeah, except...
If they're not applying in multiple instances.
So would it be instead having, basically, alterations and additions to buildings, and then you have, under a, you, you have additions and exterior alterations to historic buildings, and then sub, or my numeral one is, instead of height, general requirements, and then you list the things here, because these aren't, don't necessarily talk about height, or proportion, or rhythm specifically. I think some of these things about the specific were supposed to help give you just more detail in, in some places, examples as best they could, without doing the full illustrated guideline, giving enough detail to actually be able to implement it in a consistent way.
Yeah, I think we could work on, if, if that was a desire, to see if we, that just gets pulled forward and put in as...
So it might be Mike, you and, you and I working on it, to try and find a way to make that work, if the planning, if that's what the planning commission wants?
To do, to do away with this section and integrate it with the others?
There may be some that are general design, but certain one of...
He's just taking some of J and putting it in K, he's basically what he's saying.
Like, number nine, I can't see why number nine on the top of page seven couldn't be moved to point K, number six, which talks about, which is back on...
Landscaping, Screen, and Site Furnishing.
Landscaping and Screening on page 12, there's a whole section on landscaping, screening, and site furnishings, which apply to all districts, in all settings, and here we've got a general one up here, that maybe that just can get moved there and save us a spot.
It does feel like, from the general public, or the, who we've heard from around Design Review during the zoning changes, that I suspect some of the criticisms of this might be its length and redundancy, and, and, just that it's not, it's not necessarily written to be very, like, user-friendly, and anything that we can do to help address that would probably be help its likelihood of successful adoption. But I think, maybe you, as someone who's going to be administering this, probably be in a good position, maybe, to identify where a lot of those things are, and where some things are just there and are going to be very useful, so...
No, I, I think, I think this makes sense. I, I think this makes sense, because, I mean, when I was thinking about it, just administratively, initially, I was thinking almost having your recommendation form be mostly J with some subsets, so you know which ones you're pulling for, when you're talking about specifically, say, you know, windows and doors, or something like that, but you may not need those general design standards. You might be right, it might be that there's some generally applicable things that fall under...
I think...
New buildings are...
Yeah. And even if there's some, a little bit of repetition, when you're talking about, when you apply some of these, put some of them in...
I think for the sake of time, I would be comfortable with us relying on Meredith and Mike working together to identify a... and Mike working together to identify a more user-friendly way to present the standards in J and K.
Yeah.
And passing those along to historic preservation for their look before it comes back to us.
Meredith, I just was wondering if there's a clarification on J11, talks about integrate universal design principles, but it's not a defined term.
Yeah.
And it's not capitalized either, so we don't know that it's...
That's a super good question. I'm like, what are universal design principles?
That was, part of it, I think, is that it's a term of art. I'm honestly going to let you know that because I don't have a design background, that particular one kind of went over my head in the discussion. And there was debate internally in the HBC on whether or not that made sense.
Yeah.
So, I think if, you know, if, I think that's something that the HBC is not necessarily going to, you know, throw up a red flag if you say you either need to clarify this or get rid of it.
Yeah.
Because also, the universal, you know, I think trying to implement that is something that would be really difficult.
I mean, a lot of the design principles are listed elsewhere in the specific points of proportion, rhythm, and all of that, so.
Well, and I think that's also one reason this was here, is to sort of, because this is supposed to be generally applicable, and then you looked at the specifics to see where it feeds in, but they didn't specify. So, I think, yeah. Well, except that you don't then reference that proportion and rhythm are part of the universal design principles below. So, I think you can probably get rid of it since it's already incorporated in specifics.
Are there universal design principles?
Universal...
Well, I mean, see, I have no idea.
There are design principles. I don't know that I could say.
There are universal design principles, and that is intended for accessibility. So, ADA accessibility, it is a more inclusive ADA. So, the universal...
Well, I'm not sure that that's what they were referring to.
Universal design principles, especially, shall be pedestrian-oriented.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Oriented and integrate universal design principles. Universal design principles means accessibility by anybody, and that's what the universal design principle is.
Would that address the definition?
There is, but it's...
So, maybe we make sure that that's a defined term instead.
It would have to be a defined term. We would also have to know to what extent that's going to put in for requirements.
Are they the seven principles of universal design, developed by architects?
It's not the same.
Equitable use, flexibility in use, simple and intuitive use.
I think that's what they were referring to.
If it's not, then there's definitely Google confusion.
Yeah, because I would have assumed the universal design, because when we talk about housing, universal design in housing is to be accessible.
But in that case, is it capitalized? Because it's very specific.
I thought it was.
So, if it was capitalized, yeah.
And that's, I'm saying from my discussion, I don't think that they meant the ADA ones.
Yeah, thirteen can be another one that's, can have some vagueness to it, can have some vagueness, a lot of vagueness to it. New lane development shall incorporate sustainable design and construction materials and material compatibility with historic materials and styles.
I think the fact that the word integrate there, that gives a lot of flexibility. It's not a very strict word.
Yeah.
Well, then the next sentence on that is where Mike had problems. Before integrating any energy conservation measures to enhance the sustainability of a historic building, the existing energy-efficient characteristics of the building shall be identified and preserved. And that's a shall.
That's so confusing.
That one's...
Let's just get rid of that. I don't know, I don't understand what it's saying.
Well, they're trying to say, because the first sentence is all about new development. Really, what they're trying to get at is, because they're talking about sustainability, Mike thinks that they're really trying to get at, you can't just change out your windows.
Yeah, there's this undertone to that argument.
If you're going to replace your windows... The tiles are not the place for it. If they're already efficient, whatever that means, then you have to keep them.
Well, if replacing an old leaky window will save so many BTUs, but replacing that window with a new window, we first have to factor in how much energy it took to pump the oil out of the ground, ship it, to make that vinyl window that's going to go in to replace that window, there's actually more carbon that's being emitted to build that window than it would be to fix the old window, even though the old window doesn't work.
Aren't they talking about embodied energy?
Yeah, I haven't got the term. It is, it's not listed, it's not stated here.
And that, that detail of the discussion...
But we, as administrators, have to go through and make a decision as to whether or not somebody has provided us the information, and whether that information is accurate, and whether that's going to be...
Yeah, so personally, as zoning administrator, I'm fine getting rid of that sentence. I am not sure that this analysis is what all the members of HPC, is not the way they parsed it out for it to mean.
That wasn't my first reading. My first reading was, if you already have tight windows, or if you already have some insulation, then keep it. That kind of thing.
Be careful when you add insulation to a historic building, because of what you can do to damage the building.
Or if it's naturally insulated already, don't get rid of that.
I mean, you have to look at existing characteristics of the building.
It's like a solid wall. Strap 13.
Well, not, I wouldn't drop, I wouldn't drop the whole thing.
If we don't know what it means, so.
I don't understand it, and I don't know what it's adding.
The one thing I'd say is, if you guys are going to work on integrating the general design standards, if that one's good, the one thing, the one comment I would make about the general design standards as I read them, that's a bit different from the specific ones, I read this stuff as, through the lens of whether or not these, this list of issues gives sufficient notice to an applicant of what's expected of them, and specifically with some of the general, more general ones. I think this discussion here illustrates that that guidance is lacking, that notice is lacking, so it might be just an exercise of just drilling down, like, what is it that they really want? What are we really talking about? Just say it.
It'd be nice to, like, get an application, and I'll have to try to just go through it.
Yeah, I just feel like there's definitely nuts in all of these, but it's sort of cloaked in a lot of language that sort of just gets around. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think a couple of these last ones got a little bit more, a little bit more into things, like even 12, I don't think technically I would support keeping either. If you read it literally, so if you, alterations to building called for by public safety, accessibility, and fire codes shall be designed to maintain the character of the construction. We would, we reverse that in our heads to go through and say, if you will not be able to maintain the character of the construction materials and features, then we will deny your application. I mean, we turn these, as administrators, we have to turn these into the negatives, so we can go and say, okay, well, if they can't, okay, you have to take the molding off, you have to take the historic molding off to widen this, to put in, to make it handicapped accessible, because you're going to remove the molding, you're denied. And clearly, we probably...
Versus, versus...
If that is shall, then.
Right. Or not having a qualifier of, to the extent reasonable, or something like that, or just be like, if it's public safety, accessibility, and fire codes, I'm sorry, you just, you just have to be allowed to do it, and you move that to an exemption.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, something like that, the nut really becomes, you're going to have to comply with fire codes, try to do it in a way that's helpful to us. But it's, you're right, like, flipping it, doing it as a negative is a much clearer way of really filling down with what, what these general standards are really asking of all people. And that's the thing, a lot of this stuff, especially on the back end, I just don't, if I'm an applicant, I don't have a good sign.
You're not proposing to take 12 out, are you?
I mean, I think it was just one that I think we, I think it needs to be moved somewhere else, or it needs to be...
Mike and I need, Mike and I need to, Mike and I need to figure this out, and then be able to go back to HPC with a suggestion on how to rework these.
What we need to make sure we get from you guys is that some of the bigger policy, where your thoughts and mine's are, so, because we haven't jumped into, we've made recommendations to HPC and how we would tweak it, but we really haven't jumped too far into the policy stuff, because we need you guys to make those policy decisions of, you know, where things go, and then we can come back and massage things to go through and say, now that we've been thinking about it, we know what you want, and here's a better way of saying it.
So, for these groupings, would it be fair for us to say, we'd like you to look at it and to clarify or eliminate where appropriate? It sounds like we're...
For the general design standards and realign...
And realign them into the specifics if possible.
You're going to fit those into the subsections, into the specific standards?
Where, I think where it makes sense. And I think one of the other, you know, I mean, there's, they're big, big, big picture. Are you, are you good with the decision to have Design Review review both historic as well as new development? I mean, that's a huge part of this. Is everybody on board with that? Because if you're not, then it's reverting it back to HPC for a pretty big rewrite. So, does...
As I say, so far, it seems like we're under that assumption.
Okay.
But we haven't really fully had the discussion either.
Okay.
Is that something that Design Review doesn't do now? They don't do new development?
They do. But the problem is that, I mean, there is a choice to do one or the other. Design Review does do both right now, and covers, it's the whole, it's Design Review, it's not just Historic Review. And Historic Preservation Commission made the decision to keep that, but providing way more detail and specific subsets as to what applies to which kind of development, when it comes to the regulations. Because right now, you just have your one list of criteria, and the DRC has to say, this is, you know, clearly, preservation or reconstruction of appropriate historic style does not apply to new development. You know, harmony of exterior design with other properties in the district, that applies to both kinds of development. And it's just a, making sure that Planning Commission is on board with that decision, to stick with covering both, you know, having it be Design Review and not just Historic Review. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were on board with that.
May I make a broad policy recommendation when you're taking a look at this document? I think the more that I'm looking at this, and the more we're talking about it, is, I'll take this with a big grain of salt, because I'm sort of flushing this out of my mind right now, is I think what may be helpful is, this document, as I read it, seems to be drafted in a way, there's a lot of competing considerations, a lot of overlays, and a lot of what is trying to be achieved, or ADA requirement, or this fire requirement, it's like, all these sort of broader issues that are always sort of present here. The document kind of is drafted in a way where all those other sort of competing considerations are, it's drafted in a way where those are sort of subservient to this historic preservation goal. Does that make sense? And it might be helpful, when you take a look at how to integrate this up, is sort of prioritize what are drop-dead things that are non-negotiable, ADA requirements, fire code requirements. And I think that might be helpful if you go back and sort of tweak some of this language, is try to figure out, like, set aside things that you just have to acknowledge, and those, you have to work around those things, as opposed to trying to work those things into this goal, this historic preservation goal. Does that make sense? I don't know.
Yeah, we've got some things that we must allow, we have some things that applicants must meet.
Right.
And then I think we've got some that are somewhere in the middle, I think.
Yeah, and I think if you prioritize those competing interests, and help to, sort of help to integrate.
Oh, yeah, no, this is...
I don't mean to tell my...
No, 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 no. It's also having this feedback from the Planning Commission versus just staff who's supposed to be there to, to some degree, guide, but also to draft things the way the HPC is asking them to be presented, as this is their wish. Having that feedback to go back is...
Yeah, and that's exactly how, I think that document has that tone right now, which is, this is how we'd like things to be, and that's perfectly moddable, but it's sort of burying some of the issues that applicants need to be aware of, and just need to be recognized when they're applying to a project. And I'm sorry, I can't be...
No, no, you don't have to be. You don't have to be. That makes sense.
So, do you feel like you have what our suggestion is for J and into K there?
Yep.
Okay, so, to move along, we've, we're kind of still on K, I guess.
Yeah, K is, K is broken into six different sections, if you follow it all the way down, is most of the details.
K1s for existing structures, right?
Alteration and additions to existing, A, little A being historic, little B being non-historic.
I have one small thing I noticed looking through this section, and it's in a few different places. It's where the extent possible is kind of a phrase that's used over and over again.
Yep.
And, you know, I was more in favor of adding a little more flexibility to some of these things. And so I was thinking for some of these, to the greatest extent practicable. For instance, we've already mentioned under windows. And maybe windows isn't the best example, but, you know, says the pattern, sizes, proportions, original features such as trim, sash, and molding shall be preserved to the extent possible. Possible is a very strict word. Or it could be interpreted, depending on the personalities and how the DRC chooses to look at it.
Then how do you define practical?
You don't, but there has to be, there has to be some wiggle room.
It's more of a standard than an absolute rule. That's the way I'm seeing it. Is it's more of thinking of, like, what's common sense or reasonable.
Yeah.
Whereas, possible doesn't really have to take reasonableness into account. If it's possible, it's possible. That's what I'm getting at.
It's possible, it'll cost you three-quarters of a million dollars, but it is possible.
Yeah.
Practicable might be going and saying, well, that's not really practical.
Yeah.
Another example of it is on the next side, under the new structures, under Sub 2. It says, scale enassing, buildings shall be compatible with sounding historic structures. But this isn't one where it says possible, but I just thought, it said a shall be...
Yeah, scale enassing, though...
Isn't that already in our zoning as well?
And maybe...
That's part of, that's one of the, if it doesn't go through Design Review, and it's a new building, and it's a major site plan, then yes, you're already looking at scale enassing. And that's a, I don't think you need the, to the extent practical, or, I don't...
Looking at it again, I think the word compatible has enough squishiness built into it that's already there. So, yeah, I kind of, I'll take that one.
Compatibility and design, there's so much, so many options there.
Compatible was actually defined, though. I was glad to see that.
It is. And it's defined in a way that I think gives a lot of, I mean, unfortunately, it's also, it's in harmony with.
Yeah, but it was...
And harmony is, I can't remember, oh...
Picks out the characteristics that they're going to be looking at specifically, compatibility.
Sorry. At one point, they actually did go so far as to try and come up with a definition of in harmony.
Oh, no.
And then it went off the rails, so we just got rid of that definition. I forgot that we got rid of that. No, I think that makes sense to switch out a lot of the possibles to practicable. I think that's something we can definitely, you know, go back to the HPC, and the other thing to remember is, just because the HPC doesn't agree with the changes you are suggesting doesn't mean you can't make those changes.
The only thing I'll point out with the greatest extent possible or practicable is that it becomes extremely difficult to deny an application.
Mm-hmm.
Because basically, you have to meet this rule, but if you can't meet this rule, then we're going to let you have your project anyways, doing X.
Maybe.
I mean, we really can't go through and say, you know, you have to do this, or you're denied. It kind of takes that off the table when you've got to the greatest extent possible.
That's just what I was just going to suggest, is, you may want to go through, and if you're going to make those changes, just figure out where you want to stay firm.
Yeah.
Requirements, and where you want to give that wiggle room, because in my experience, in other contexts, whenever you say... Because in, in my experience, in other contexts, whenever you say something like practicable, it comes back and says, no, can't do it. There's no, you have no...
You have no recourse.
Yeah, there's no basis to, you know, bankrupt me, I can't do it.
And I think that's, things like, on page nine, the roof drainage systems and signage, where you have, when possible, and to the greatest extent possible, I would leave those. When you're talking about, you know, roof drainage systems shall not hide or obscure architectural character-defining features and shall run adjacent to building corners when possible. I'm not going to change that one. Same with the one about signage, and, you know, evidence of the sign's installation must be removed when a sign has been removed to the greatest extent possible. You know, if you literally can't repaint the building to adjust for the fading, then so be it. But I think in those instances, you need that greatest extent possible to have it as, you know, as firm as you can get it for those items.
When it comes to something like matching the window patterning, you shouldn't say, you know, to the greatest extent possible. You know, if it's a four over four, you've got to replace it with a four over four.
Right.
You don't go to the greatest extent practicable.
Exactly. Which I, which I think, which I think is what they have in here, is it needs to match. And then there's some places...
And if you can't, then we don't, then you're denied.
Right. And some of these, like...
And that's, that's fine.
Yeah, and I don't think I would adjust these either to practicable for X. I mean, would you say, you know, you've got to leave some wiggle room, but I wouldn't put practicable.
Yeah. I was just pointing out, when that, when that does come up, be careful to read it knowing that it's, it's limiting you as the, as the reviewer as well.
Mm-hmm.
It's building in the flexibility, but we lose, we lose our ability to say no.
So, I'm just curious, how do we come out?
Well, we don't, but I think that's okay, because we don't, we don't want to tell somebody, you can't remove a sign, when we have other regulations that say, you have to remove your sign once you've left the building.
Okay.
Yes.
Did you have someone, Barb?
Yeah, new building standards two J, did that, did that one change under the context?
What do you mean, did it get changed?
We talked about it with the committee, but new construction shall incorporate historic architectural elements that reinforce or enhance the character. You can't incorporate, new construction incorporating historic architectural elements is in contradiction to 2201J eight.
It's a little bit throughout this, this awkward dance of like, if you're building something now, make sure it's representative of now, but make sure it matches all the material and patterns and all the details of the historic building.
Wait, but this is, this is also the compat, this also goes to the compatibility, I think. And saying that when you put in a brand-new building, try to, try to make it compatible by doing this, this is one of those things that reflects one of your general standards. So your general, where was the general standard?
I think, I think the extent, yeah, the, the sense is, like, even when we were building the parking garage, there was a discussion of using the, the caps for the parking garage, and some of the interior work would be granite or would be materials that looked like granite.
To reflect the other buildings.
So that way, it reflects the other granite buildings that are next door. But it's, it's a new building, it's just, rather than having no connection to the rest of the neighborhood, it had these granite caps.
Right.
I get what they're trying to do, it's just really hard to legislate.
It is a dance, yeah.
Oh, which is why you...
If you say it's historic, then it needs to be historic. And so new construction shall incorporate historic architectural elements?
Oh, yeah, we discussed that, where we could just, where we're...
All right, so I just wanted to check to make sure that...
But I haven't made any changes, because, but that was...
Yeah.
I have my notes from our previous discussion, and I'm going to have our notes from this discussion, and then go through and do a bigger rewrite. I wasn't, I wasn't going to new drafts in between.
Just take the word historic out.
Yeah, and I think everybody agreed at that meeting that that's what we were going to do, but...
Yeah, I thought we did, but I wasn't sure where that's due.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm, sorry, Barbara, I wasn't going to do another draft.
Basically, now, now was the time for us to incorporate that.
Pardon?
We were waiting until now, I think, to incorporate the stuff we discussed that night. So if you have more things from that night, yeah.
Yeah, we can, I...
That was really the primary one.
Yeah, that was, I think, the big change.
I know when Stephanie was here, about two weeks ago at the meeting, she commented her confusion with L and M later on, which was the specific guidelines for the Western Gateway and Riverfront District, and she didn't understand why they were there.
Those were just...
They were randomly there and...
We pulled those in because those are in the current regulations.
Pages 12 and 13, and I would think we could probably strike them. I think they, they kept them only because they're in the existing rules.
Yeah, we, we only kept them because they're in the existing rules. I don't have the history as to know why they were put in the existing rules. I mean, were those added in the 2018 regulations? Because they changed...
No, they, they go back.
Okay, but you just changed the name as to what?
Yeah, because before they, before they were the Office Park and Gateway District.
Okay, so...
And because those districts no longer existed, we simply changed the name to be the Western Gateway District and the Riverfront District.
Yeah, I mean, you have, in Riverfront, you have your new development shall be oriented so that both river and street facades are primary. I mean, there are specific things in here that are very specific to those districts. And maybe it's a going through and seeing which of these things are now duplicative. You know, your 2201M1 spatial relationships, that's all covered now in our basic specifics.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Stephanie. I'm in favor of getting rid of both those. There's not...
Completely?
No.
I don't know if I would get rid of it completely. There are some things in here that are very specific to, look, these are gateways, these are places that people...
See both sides.
Right.
Riverfront, I'm not sure...
Riverfront two?
Even the Gator...
Directional expression and sense of entry.
How much of the Riverfront is in the, the map, is, how much?
Materials on the river side of a structure shall be of equal character and quality as those on the street side? Like, that's very, very specific to the Riverfront. There's a few things.
But these are, these are the existing, so this is all, so this only applies in the Riverfront areas that are within the blue. So it really is just this area. So the question is, if you already have to meet all the other design criteria, you now have an additional set of criteria for these guys. So there's actually more regulation in Riverfront than there is in State Street.
Yeah.
But in some cases, you're seeing both sides of those buildings in the Riverfront, where you don't see both sides of State Street buildings. And without it being...
Well, you could on Taylor Street, I mean, we're building a couple of buildings right now, Taylor Street that are visible from Memorial Drive.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's go through to have some of these things apply, not necessarily to the Riverfront District, but, well, buildings with Riverfrontage...
Yes.
Versus Riverfront District. But I don't know if that, how that really, if that's something that people want to do. I mean, I think it's...
Aren't views of the, of the State House and things like that already covered elsewhere in here?
Yeah, so that, that is, but that's different from this Riverfront number two. That's a funky one.
But aren't all those, aren't those concepts, don't they sort of technically be incorporated into the stuff that we've already...
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if some of these things can...
Is it a little more clunky to add it to, to the existing?
Versus just have a couple?
I mean, roof top mechanical equipment in the Riverfront District is definitely a concern, because you see it from above.
Can't all that stuff be dealt with, with scale, massing, orientation, pattern, all that other stuff? I mean, I feel like, because there's enough tools at the Designer View boys, in their toolbox, to be able to take all that stuff into consideration.
What, so what's the resistance to having some specific design guidelines in those two districts?
Because they're, they're, they're just, they're just grandfathered at the, at the moment, they're not really tailored to what we're currently doing. So it's, so there's not like a...
I mean, some of these are, some of these are duplicative and more general, such as the, you know, provide visual protection for gateways to city and view corridors, that's duplicative of just a general standard in here. But then, it, it may be just a reanalysis. I think they didn't want to rework something that had been, been very clearly specifically adopted without confirmation that that was an area open to being reworked.
Could, could we ask them to take a look at those two sections, just to find if there's anything that should be incorporated specifically and incorporated elsewhere?
Yep. I mean, that's the, you know, right now, in Western Gateway, there's all utilities shall be placed underground. The only time right now that the DRB deals with that, about placing utilities underground, I think, is subdivision. That's the only time that that comes up. Whereas right now, in Western Gateway, they're really, for a while now, I guess, they've been really trying to push to make sure if you're doing new development, you have that underground.
I guess that makes sense.
So, yeah, it may be a reevaluation to see which of these need to be kept.
Well, I think that actually, talking about those sections brings us through. We kind of skipped over demolition and signage, and if anyone had anything to say about those.
I was just going to ask, is the demolition section...
Um, hold on, let me just make my notes. So the demolition section, I'm just double-checking to make sure that the old one didn't have anything in it. Yeah, the demolition section, having that specifically laid out, is new. And it's a little, I'm going to be honest, it's a little messy. I'm just trying to remember, hold on one second.
I think in 3004, there's some demolition requirements for all structures, but the demolition of national, of historic ones are only...
Yeah, I'm just looking, except that the, the current, the DRC, the current zoning regulations say that no structure may be erected, reconstructed, substantially altered, restored, removed, or demolished without review of the design plans by the DRC. So right now, demolition within the overlay district does go to the DRC or is supposed to. And I'm just trying to see what in here is... Yeah, this is, this is not new. I think it's just a restatement. I'm double-checking the applicability stand clause here, to see if we even need that. And I don't think we do, I, I honestly, I think it's duplicative, given the reference to land development and the applicability standard. And land development includes demolition. So 2201E applicability says, land development within the Design Review overlay district shall only be approved after review by the DRC. And, hold on.
Demolition requires DRC and DRB.
Right. Yeah, that's just, I, I think what this was is just to, I think this was sort of a reiteration, just to make it really, really clear for users, but I don't know if it's, it's not necessary.
Unfortunately, this is, this is the section that's supposed to be talking about standards, and there are no standards that were given.
Right. So it doesn't really make sense to have it here.
Yeah, this, if you're going to have requirements that you're going to review demolition, we should have standards that say, these are the instances where we would approve it, and these are the instances where we wouldn't.
Yeah, I think you and I talked about this as being a problem. Well, I mean, but I mean, the thing is, they don't...
Unless they're just enforcing the rules that are under 3004D. Those are, those are the general demolition standards that...
And that's...
It's going to say, you have the, you've got two ways of getting approved for demolition. One is the demolition of a historic building, where the resulting redevelopment of the site is going to have a substantial public benefit. And the second one is, it's not cost-effective to save the structure.
Well, and I think that's, I think what, that's one reason they had, in a way, these general design standards, which could apply to all of these things, is that your first clause here, so in addition to your 3004D standards, which are your general demolition standards, which is what this sub three incorporates, that you have to review under the provisions of section 3004D, because they didn't want to just rewrite them all. In addition to DRC's review under that, if the general design standards also apply to all of these scenarios specified under the specific design standards, then you run into this, removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided. You start running into some of these general standards that would come into play, potentially, if we leave it organized the way it is now, versus just saying, DRC reviews demolition projects, just to clarify, DRC reviews demolition projects within the overlay district under 3004D, same as the DRB does. So you have some options there. Do we just limit them to the same standards, and then they give their guidance to the DRB as to how to apply 3004D to things in the overlay district?
I think it'd be difficult for somebody to meet the other requirements...
Yeah, I think so, too.
...as well as meet the demolition. Either you're going to be allowed to demolish it, or you're not going to be allowed to demolish it.
Yep.
Apologize, I have to run it.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
We can still, we can still vote. So I, I think what's best there is to leave it to you two to come up with something to suggest to Historic Preservation. Is it okay with everyone?
Yeah.
And so with that, we should try to wrap up real quick and get a vote on our suggestions.
Can I ask one specific, one very quick question? So definitions are, because they're defined terms in here, will those defined terms also pertaining to a broader zoning document?
Um...
These are not, in other words, these are unique, these are not defined in, in the zoning ordinance?
Right, because anything that was defined in the zoning ordinance, we tried to just incorporate those. These, in general, aren't used elsewhere, and this specifically says, these defined terms are specific to the provisions of this section. So they don't apply...
They don't apply?
No, they don't, the way this is drafted, they don't apply to the rest of the regulations. And they, most of them shouldn't be used in this...
If there is one that you want to have used broadly, we would just take it out of this section and put it into 510.
Yeah, if there's something you want used more broadly, then we can do that easily.
Let me look at that, but I, because that was not, that's where I wasn't clear, because it seems like a number of them could potentially pertain to the larger document.
Yeah, they, they aren't, they aren't intended to, right now.
Like the, the elevation is defined, but it's not defined in zoning?
Correct.
So, yeah, we, we'll have to revisit that, though, because we should vote now, because I know people have to leave. So, do we, do we have a motion for what we want to pass on? Or I can give a shot at putting it into words. Do we have a motion to take the suggestions that we've given to Meredith and Mike tonight, to have those incorporated and then pass along to the Historic Preservation Commission for their, for their review and possible integration into the proposed regulations?
Second.
Okay. And who's in favor? I opposed, okay. And it passes.
Yeah, he thinks it's more folks were still at right.
That's right. So we didn't need John's vote. And then for the agenda to wrap it up, we're going to skip the boundary discussion, that's going to be next week. We're just trying to handle all this stuff at once before getting back to the city plan. And it says that we can consider minutes, but let's actually just put that off, since we ran late tonight, and we'll do that next time. So with that, motion to adjourn. Non-debatable motion. We adjourn.
Thank you.